Does anyone have an amendment to the agenda? Before we get into the purpose of the floor and agenda, our new mayor of the Village of Goshen is here. Would you like to say hello to us?
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Thank you for accommodating me last minute. Just want to come, this is the first public meeting that your board has had since I came into office. And I just wanted to come by and just say, on behalf of myself and the village board, looking very much forward to working with the town. The past month, I think Doug and I have met probably half a dozen times, formally and formally. A lot of those meetings were initiated by the supervisor, so I wanted to thank you. Ken Newville came to our first meeting last week, and that was very nice. So I just want to thank you for extending your hand to us, and I'm extending it back. And I think there's a lot of things that we can do positively moving forward. The economic development just comes to mind as the first thing. Today, we sat in and were talking about a grant together. So I'm very excited to be working for the village, but also to be working with the town board. And I definitely foresee a lot of good things in the future.
Good. Thank you, Tom. Your mayor is probably one of the nicest little villages in the state of New York. And so, very grateful you've been there. Look forward to working with you.
And the one thing to remember once again is that the village is part of the town.
Absolutely.
So we need to work together. We've been saying this for a long time. We're all one unit. We're Goshen. So, thank you for coming.
That's why. Good. I'll let you guys get out of your meeting. Thank you for accommodating me, first thing. I'm going to head to work.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Buy the groceries, right? Okay, guys. Come on, guys. Dennis, you got the floor?
A couple issues which I wanted to add to the agenda if the board sees fit, which we should discuss tonight, is that Nelson, Inc. contract.
Okay. You want to do that in executive session?
We can.
What would you prefer?
Well, this way, if we do it in executive session, which would be absolutely proper, you'd have to come back to take any action that connects with it.
What are you recommending? We do it that way?
Yeah. I have no problem, by the way. You know, it's a parking vehicle. It's a whole harmless.
Let's do it open. Let's do it open.
Yeah, that's no problem. And the other issue too, which you can do open, I just hope we can complete it tonight, is the Time Warner situation. I resolved the issue on the monies we're going to be receiving from them.
We're going to do it tonight?
Right. That would be my thought.
That would be nice.
Also, do I authorize you to sign the franchise contract? But that has to be...
Executive session.
Doesn't necessarily, it's just to be doctored. It's just not doctored tonight. Only to get the authority to sign it upon my completion or review submission. Yeah, we are typing all the things tonight.
Okay, good. Okay. We want to do as many as we can in open session.
Especially if there's money coming this way.
Absolutely. Okay. In the audience, does anyone have anything they'd like to talk about relative to the agenda to include the ones we just mentioned, which were Nelson, Inc., tree cutters, and cable franchise renewal? If not, would you like to go with the old business?
Before you get there, I want to make a quick comment. I very rarely get upset when I read about the newspaper, especially on the political lines. Yesterday, there was an article in the Times, our record, that totally miscolled out the town supervisor that happened to be doing this interview for that article, indicating that Mr. Bluefield put the blame on the MTV issues on Orange County. And that's not even close to it, it's an outright lie. So if anybody in the community believes that, thank you for being honest there. Mr. Bluefield would never say that, he never said that. And I believe they got information to county executives today. That the press can do and say what they want. But putting outright lies like that is unacceptable, and I don't feel we're going to get excited. No, and I'm sorry if that's happened, but...
Well, I'm grateful you answered. I also called the county executive and said that what was in the paper is not what I've said. And he believed me and understood that, so it's peaceful.
You may want to enlighten the audience about that. I'm familiar.
Okay, basically... Is this the article that John Sullivan wrote? Well, this isn't the first time that he's done that.
No, it's not.
You were here, Phil, that night, when he took you completely out of context.
Absolutely.
And you got right out on him about it.
I did.
He was sensationalizing something you had said to do with this board.
Yep.
Well, let me share with the public what it's all about then. I got a call from Mr. Sullivan several days ago. And he's going to do an article on the MTV and the county property DPW area, and our DPW area, and all that. In 2006, when we first discovered that we had MTV contamination, we worked with the DEC, New York State DEC. We hired an engineer, and we did all the things that the DEC asked us to do. Soil borings and everything else, and have a company do this work. At the conclusion of the soil borings and things, the DEC contacted us and said, "The problem's not coming from you. And you no longer have to be the lead agency. But you can be the lead agency if you'd like to." And I said, "No, I don't want to be." But in that case, the DEC became the lead agency. They never told me that if we were not at fault. They never told me that the county was at fault. That a lot more work had to be done to define where the source of the problem was coming from. Nothing more, nothing less. But they suspected we were not at fault. But they were not going to come out and say that. Well, from that time, of course, we're in litigation. So we ended an account. And so, which is understandable, you know? But we did many, many things early on. But when I had the conversation the other day, and Ken happened to be in my office, I mentioned it just that way. It was, we were not told we were not the source. The county was not the source. But in fact, it was indeterminate, but we were highly suspect as not being the cause of the problem. So with that, but when you see it in the paper, people believe it. If they read it, maybe, or maybe not. It sells newspapers, but it's not what I said. It's not, I've said that statement many, many times. So I did call the county executive. And Doug, I understand, and we went on from there. And I do thank Ken for covering my back on this, because you know what? We're bored together, and we think as one, and try to do our best for each other. The first item under Old Business is... Would someone like, do we have resolutions on these, Dennis?
Yes.
Would someone like to make a motion regarding, well, why don't you go through the resolutions, Dennis?
It's one resolution, just like what I called.
Right. Well, you know, let me... Okay, on Monday night, we went through three cost reduction ideas. These were assignments to people in the business here in the building. Bill Standish, the budget officer, had responsibility for the telephone service contract. And he's come up with a cost reduction idea that the town board has bought into for an annual savings of $5,508 a year. My assistant, Barbara Stokolowski, she had the assignment to regarding a new elevator maintenance contract with Isom Prop Elevator Corporation. And we have an annual savings of $1,409.76. And the third one was the building inspector's office with his secretary or assistant at the working with the Xerox copy machine company. And they came up with a contract savings of an annual savings of $3,337.8. So on Monday night, we buoyed all three of these. I'm very proud of all the people involved in it. And Dennis has put together a town resolution that covers them all.
As indicated, the resolution in summary basically provides, supervisor be authorized to sign the annex proposals and/or maintenance agreement and/or agreement with Xerox to buy a service equipment to us. As we pointed out, it appears that we're getting the same service, lesser fees.
Right. All three of them?
All three. And as summarized by the supervisor, the savings are in excess of $10,000, nearly $11,000 on a per-annual basis. And again, the resolution empowers him, it authorizes him, if he will, to sign those on behalf of the town of Goshen.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion authorizing supervisor to sign these agreements per this resolution?
So, second.
Any discussion?
Good job. Excellent. Excellent job. And I think it's just the start of it, too.
Yeah, Phil and I have had a conversation about some things that he and I want to do, but particularly he. And I think you're going to see more of this going forward. Madam clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Phil Cantorino.
Aye.
Councilman George Lyons.
Aye.
Councilman Kenneth Newville.
Aye.
Councilman Luca Pallas.
Aye.
Supervisor Douglas Lupe.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, the next one is, would someone like to make a motion regarding the minutes of work sessions March 7th and March 21st, 2011, and our regular meetings of February 24th, March 10th, and March 24th, 2011?
So move.
Is your second?
I'll second. But I want to abstain from the one I was not at, March 24th.
Okay.
And I wasn't there at that meeting, but on page two.
Oh, I thought the minutes would be perfect, but you weren't there, George.
I won't put on the other guy.
No, I'm not. Sorry, George.
This was done by Val. There's Old Business under E. I think somehow that has to be corrected. I think maybe things were switched.
Okay.
We don't have a tertiary settlement with Goshen and things as well.
No. That's 24th, correct?
Yeah.
Let's omit the 24th, and we'll come back to it.
Yes, I wasn't here for the 21st, I was 24th.
Okay. You'll need to abstain. Yeah, in terms of the 24th, what we'll probably need to do is go back to the minutes of that and find out what that's all about. So, let me see, well, let's do each one separately, and then people can abstain.
I'll go to my own motion.
Okay.
Go to your second.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion regarding the work session of March 7th?
So move.
Is your second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are... Motion carries. Okay, approval of the minutes on March 21st, 2011?
So move.
Second.
Louis, you're going to say?
I abstain.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Regular meeting of February 24th, 2011?
So move.
Second.
And George is going to abstain, but what, it's not this one?
No, did you say February 24th?
Yes. Which one were you, March 24th?
The one I was not at, is March 24th.
Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Wait a minute, no, 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 on March 24th, we don't want to vote, because that's the one we're sending back because of the confusion.
Yes. That was February 24th.
That's what I'm saying, that's what we're just talking about.
Right.
Okay, so we need, how are we going to do that?
We... Just amend.
February 24th, that's the one where there's confusion on. Yeah. Yeah, we just voted on it.
George says March 24th. He told me it's the minutes, it says February 20th.
Right, we approved the minutes on March 7th, March 21st, and we reached the approval of the 24th, and we shouldn't have done that.
Right, but also, it's February.
I'm sorry, for February 24th, we shouldn't have voted on it. March 24th, March 10th are coming up.
But why shouldn't we have approved the minutes of February 24th?
Because we have to go back, that's the one where the problem...
No, no. It was March 24th.
Oh, me, okay, okay.
Don't your minutes reflect March 24th as a being motion?
Yeah, we did it okay. We did it okay. I was confused at March. Okay, would someone like to make a motion regarding the minutes of March 10th?
So move.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. March 24th, we won't approve, we'll do that next time around. Okay. Let's put the Nelson, Inc. on your old business. Dennis, can you help us with that?
As the board is aware, Nelson, Inc. is the tree trimming company which contracts the orange rock. And they will be operating within the town of Goshen over the next, I can imagine, three to five weeks, trimming orange rock, right-of-way, slime, itch, if you will. And in connection with that activity, they have requested of us that they be allowed to park their vehicles, both construction and trimming, together with their own personal vehicles when they report the work, at the town highway garage. Having discussed it with the superintendent of highways and board, to my knowledge, there's no objection to that. And what we're obtaining from them is a certificate of insurance. And we have, I call it, a minimal contract, which is basically a whole harmless clause, which sets forth that Nelson, Inc. will not hold us in any way liable for any activity, directly or indirectly, as a result of that parking, or any activity as an offshoot of that, in terms of their activity with the community. And we need to authorize supervisor to sign that this evening, so that we can process it with Nelson, Inc., because they intend to start, I believe, franchise service tomorrow.
That's correct. Would someone like to make a motion regarding this agreement?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Again, just to reiterate, it's strictly a whole harmless clause, totally in our favor, and it's acknowledging that they're conducting some kind of activity.
Louis, assign this thing and give it to you if you get up to highway?
Sure.
Very good. Okay, the next one is the cable franchise renewal, and our payment from Time Warner?
Correct. That, as the board will remember, we had a bit of discussion. Time Warner, a big outfit. The individuals were dealing with the vice president of their international group. And, well, we finally got down to a particular assistant who could modify the language and straighten it out. And basically, it recites as follows, in part, you know, we need a resolution to authorize supervisor to sign this on behalf of the town. Time Warner will retain from the construction fund $120,000 and expend it for purposes of extending service to unserviced areas located within the town of Goshen, or upon such other basis that the parties may agree, be it both the town and Time Warner. Secondly, 60% of the remaining balance of the aforementioned set aside, number one of both, will be paid by Time Warner to the town of Goshen to utilize at its sole discretion. Time Warner will retain and utilize in its sole discretion the remaining 40% of the balance. So they authorize the supervisor to sign this, we will have a $120,000 construction fund still available to extend service to unserviced areas within the town of Goshen, and also will be receiving somewhere in a neighborhood of between $120,000 and $180,000 as disbursed to the town to be used for general purposes.
Would someone like to make a motion regarding that resolution?
So move.
I'll second.
George, you're going to make that?
No.
George is the problem this time.
Yeah, I'll make one.
And Louis, second.
And I don't even like to give you an absolute definitive number, because again, if a percentage is also accrued into this rest of the year.
Whatever's in there.
Any discussion?
Yeah, for the benefit of the public, essentially, the town was accruing over this past, I guess, 12 years. And it's really a nonfall thing. I called the commission, called Time Warner several times, and there wasn't any other municipality that had this set aside for expansion of the cable. And of course, when people didn't get cable in the town, it started to people, they were now going on to other, did go on to other things, like the dish. So it was kind of a totally unique thing, and it took quite a long time. But with the money pressures that we have, it certainly is nice to hear that we're going to be getting somewhat of a way for, I guess you'd say, from it.
Good job. Good job.
I just want to thank George. This didn't happen one of your phone calls, I know that.
Well, I'd like to thank George and Dennis, because Dennis did a lot.
Those of you who know, their offices, their headquarters, is in the Time Warner building, Columbus Circle, which is home to some of the most famous restaurants in the United States. So it wasn't totally...
They're not going to got you for the restaurant.
You won't.
Hope you get in chest, no. I think I've never been in the building.
It's a magnificent structure.
I think one of the other things is, if we go back 12 years ago, when the board was here putting together this contract to Time Warner, those people are long gone. Okay?
Not all of them.
Well, he's still down the other end.
I haven't done the original contract.
Yeah, so the way it was worded and the way it was put together was for the long-term benefit of the town of Goshen, and here it is today. And it...
Well, that doesn't help. I'm so sorry about that.
Okay, all in... We need a roll call. One of the...
Phil Cantorino.
Aye.
Councilman George Lyons.
Aye.
Councilman Kenneth Newville.
Aye.
Councilman Luca Pallas.
Aye.
Supervisor Douglas Lupe.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much.
I've been in that building many times. TM used to own it.
It's magnificent.
Oh, you don't know.
The next item is...
Before you leave, we're the second part of the Time Warner aspect. We have an open franchise agreement, which is going to benefit the town to the extent of 5% of the gross revenues. And we had purposely been holding that up only to obviously secure and finalize the distribution of the construction fund. Now, with that's been done, I would request that you authorize supervisor, again, to sign on behalf of the town of Goshen, the franchise agreement, and we process it accordingly once my office has completed the draft of error corrections.
Would someone like to make that motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? This is another one I'd like to thank George on, because George worked on this probably for a year.
The other thing about that is, is once this is signed, then it has to go up to the state commission. And the lag time there is about three months. And then they'll pass it back to us, and then we'll be able to institute the new parts of the agreement.
Right, good. Madam clerk, we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Phil Cantorino.
Aye.
Councilman George Lyons.
Aye.
Councilman Kenneth Newville.
Aye.
Councilman Luca Pallas.
Aye.
Supervisor Douglas Lupe.
Aye, motion carries.
Move, good business.
Yep. The next one is new business, and the mayor, Roddy, alluded to this, first item. It's to set a date for an international, I'm sorry, informational meeting for a joint economic development initiative workshop to be held Wednesday, May 4th, 2011, at 7:00 PM, here in Town Hall, 41 Webster Avenue. And what this is, is a workshop with some very learned people. We're going to have several federal and state, county politicians, and planners, and others here. All the land use boards for the village and the town are going to be here. We'll have, I think, the president of Sumy Orange and Middletown here, and several others. And the purpose of this is to promote, begin the process of promoting economic development within the community of Goshen, town and village, jobs, tax rateables, et cetera. We've got a list of names of some people that were, that were going to try to solicit to work on the team with Mr. Phil Dropkin, who is, it was his idea. He's the chairman of our zoning board of appeals and our ERB, our review board. And he came by my office, and he talked to myself and Mr. Cantorino about wanting to do this. And he's very excited about it. He's the kind of man who could pull it off. I did say, "When you do all this other stuff, would you please put somewhere at the top of the stack a food store for the community of Goshen?" And he smiled.
Didn't say no.
Didn't say no, you know, but we'll see what happens. So anyway, that's what all this is about. And we've already sent out the invites and all that, but we do need to make it official through a motion to set this date for this meeting on Wednesday, May 4th, 2011, at 7:00 PM, Town Hall, Goshen, New York, 41 Webster Avenue. Would someone like to make a motion in that regard?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Dennis, you want to go through the next couple?
We have two tax surcharge rises which we can settle this evening. Yet you have before you the resolutions. I apologize, my underlying files are in my car. So if you need any further information beyond the resolutions, I have to go get them. I know we discussed them Monday night, and I'm sure you're familiar with them. But if the public or the press needs any additional information, I can provide it to them later on in the evening, simply by accessing the files. But simply put, they have to do with interstate waste system of New York Inc., wherein a tax surcharge was commenced by them against the town, or tax years 2009 and 2010, which is resulting in a reduction in their assessed value to a level of $952,000 in assessment on their market. The second resolution is a resolution of the tax surcharge is filed by the Orange County Golf Club against the town, and that is for that portion of the golf club in the town of Goshen, which consists of nine holes of that 18-hole golf course, almost no buildings, just vacant land. And the thing is, it doesn't include clubhouse. Correct. Clubhouse in all, most of the structures are in the town of Waukegan. And so, it's not really the tail wagging the dog, but we have a lesser part, if you will, in the overall evaluation. And that is resulting in a reduction in the assessment to a mid $450,000 level. And those nine holes are about $50,000 a hole. And the amount of the reduction, as you see, over five years, it covers the years 2006 through 2011, approximates to, I would say, in the neighborhood of $75,000 per year assessment reduction. And the proper resolutions, as set forth, is to authorize the supervisor and/or myself to sign any old documents necessary to effectuate the purposes of the resolution. And it'll still process for a court order.
Are there separate resolutions, Dennis?
There are separate resolutions, I just have to combine them.
Would someone like to make a motion regarding the interstate waste transfer system, New York, Inc.?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Phil Cantorino.
Aye.
Councilman George Lyons.
Aye.
Councilman Kenneth Newville.
Aye.
Councilman Luca Pallas.
Aye.
Supervisor Douglas Lupe.
Aye, motion carries. The next one, would someone like to make a motion regarding the settlement of tax surcharge claim of the Orange County Golf Club?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Phil Cantorino.
Aye.
Councilman George Lyons.
Aye.
Councilman Kenneth Newville.
Aye.
Councilman Luca Pallas.
Aye.
Supervisor Douglas Lupe.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, mayor, very much.
Yeah, just as a point of information, I'll root into your agenda, there's a couple more this evening I want to discuss with you in executive session, the names which I'll give you to you when we go into executive session. Again, it's an economic decision, some of these we don't have expenses or potential refunds involving even much as $1,000, which are received by the expenses.
We had a number of meetings that are scheduled, are these ones that we have already been on and discussed?
No, all new ones.
Okay.
In the process of elimination, getting the bullhanging proof, if you will, out of In the process of elimination, getting the bullhanging proof, if you will, out of the way.
Do we need to meet on these?
I don't believe so. Again, just as an example, some of them involve such little requests that you cannot even justify me looking at them, let alone getting a razor or a nail license, et cetera.
So you think...
It's an expense item.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Now, by the way, I think we're, help me out, Dennis, by overstating this, but we've probably resolved now about a third of our tax surcharges?
Easily.
Okay. And this is one of the things we've been talking about for two or three years at budget time. The tax surcharges are the hidden liability. It's always out there that when it does come to court into fruition, it can be a positive or negative on the, on the organization. Takes a lot of effort, a lot of work by a lot of people, bigger Dennis and this guy. Okay. The next one is that we discussed on Monday. Would someone like to make a motion that we appoint nine E. Lipinski and Kenneth W. Sinsbox to the Town of Goshen Environmental Review Board effective April 18, 2011?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um...
Am I wrong?
Okay.
You gonna make that motion?
Who made that?
I made the motion.
And who's second?
I think it is.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now, the next, would someone like to make a motion to authorize the supervisor to pay accounts payable check run of April 14, 2011, amounting to $111,438.58?
No move.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now it's open for proof to the floor of anybody who'd like to talk about any subject that they'd like to talk about.
Who said I'm this?
Oh, I don't need that.
Just so we get your take.
Oh, okay.
Get recorded.
I'm not spoiled.
Okay.
I'm not 1953 to be in there anymore.
All right.
I'm no A and the arrogant eagle. I'm Mr. Stack. Some of you don't mean, some of you don't. I bought a building here in 17M. June, six, eight months, guys, something. Next bar, it closed up. I'm 72 years old, still working. I got a dementia.
So, you're crazy?
Crazy. Right, yes, sir. I always thought your name was Turri.
Why look like that?
That's back in the 40s. We're in World War II. What are you here? Get to the point. I go up to the nice girl up there, Kathleen, nice Irish girl, up the street, upstairs. You gotta bear with me.
Building, building.
Right. Had six, three, four months. She says, he just made this town of Goshen building and zoning. I said, no. Lamar, clear channel, they want to put a digital sign there. Oh, you got a digital sign there. I said to myself, I thought I was fighting the Comrade Rouge. Flying Cambodia there. Six feet, one, what, this is a, that's fifty years ago. I'm not lying to you. I received, Dennis, a little bit of my girl. Well, so I got a plane out of Newark a couple of years ago, remember that?
Yes.
I said, my girl. I'm...
No.
Oh, I wouldn't give this to you. Anyway, I'm just here to do this. I don't spread hair. I have no A and the arrogant eagle. Lamar wants to put one up there, a clear channel. Seventy-five feet or fifty feet, forty feet or fourteen. A nice digital professional sign. Now, if you go by that place over the weekend, sunny afternoon ride at the church, noon time, whatever, what I did to the building. No, I don't know. I'm no, I'm like Warren Buffett, same old 1998 old material. I'm not that way. I don't, I don't sugarcoat it. And I did a lot of work on the building. A 19Nias?
Oh.
Right, yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm kidding. I don't know you can't dig in buildings. But then you go right up the street, the Capitol storage. I think my girl put that up. Was it my girl? No, Kusuga. Thirty flies ago. Was it Pauline, Denji, whatever. And then, right next to it, is Baker. Has a little small digital. I said to myself, I did the alley shuffle. Right there. I did all this work on this build. I mean, well, nice, and I had clear channel, because I just signed contracts. Wait, I got up there in Western Orange County Deer Park, Interstate 84, clear channel, thirty years, clear channel. Mr. Donovan, that's an attorney, for the company. My wife, that's, up there in Interstate. And I bought the old South LaGuardia, Mr. Cant...
Cantorino?
Turri, I'm sorry. Thirty-four, thirty-four years ago, it used to be old South LaGuardia Bar. Remember that, Dennis?
I do.
No, I'm not cutting it.
No, I don't. I do. Well, he was not right there. Right.
Half Jersey, half New York, so I just want that couple ways though. And now I get to the state of New York, put a pennies change in, exit. Be exit one, and where the cheap gas station, got the exit one A. I know New York does have much money, but we'll get it, we'll get there. And I'm just saying that why can't town of Goshen work for me? Now, I don't want, I never swear in front of women. My old man, in 1947, his sign fourteen, where the sun don't shine, he trumped me that. They have the whole adult bookstore. Actually, I cravings, craving the poor man went out of business, paid three thousand a month at the store. The garbage is still out there. I know, I'd be helping, I'd be discouraged too. Just a lazy landlord, what do you mean? What do you have this? He said, why would you have a landlord on your deal? I said, well, I'm trying to use a baby, that's all right, no problem. And they got an old bookstore over here, one is out, and they got other garbage there. And then, almost on my property, it says cravings, it's been months and a day for twenty, thirty years. You know, ever heard the word initiative? You know, a little. But I guess a landlord, I guess, he wants a million dollars for it. Well, he's dreaming too. But the thing is, I just want to know, I don't know, was your time or my time? I go to bed, then fuck. Anyway, to turn around, because I just want to get approval, who do I go to for a site, a site plan, or the ZBA, Mr. Phil Dropkin, I spoke to him at Christmas time, and I said, zone commercial. In other words, your 211 over there up the street here, in Middletown, is Walmart, and that's your so-called 211 over there, because the supervisor, Mr.?
Lukefield.
Right, sir. And I remember you, nice guy, you were in the tech, 68, right? Or after the tech?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was waiting for that. And to turn around, and I just, I want to put the clear channel to, but then they say, oh, no, you can't. This girl up there, the Irishman now, Mrs. Cat, oh.
Kathleen.
Right, sir. I'm sorry. And, you know, she just made it half a gate for a subdivision. No, it's not a subdivision. It's a professional sign of fifty, sixty feet in the air, not like the old garbage signs you got down. I'm not putting any man or woman down. They got to make a living. And clear channel doesn't, they don't do that, might not, because they're a stopper. You know, a stopper. You know, clear channel is through throughout the country, right? These nice professional digital webboards. And what do I, can you help me, if possible, please? Who do I approach to get my sign approved, the zone commercial? If you're just thinking your mind, this is your 211. Not here. You wouldn't want to put that after the little village, of course not. That's your 211. Mr. Lukefield told me, and I'll never forget it, there's more cars and traffic on 17M than this, that's where they are, that's where it is over there.
Eighty-four.
What's that, sir?
Eighty-four.
Yeah, eighty-four, and no, a seventeen.
Seventeen.
And more traffic on 17M. Oh, Jack Perry. And who do I, I want to get the ball room here. I don't know how many more years ago. That, and also, in the other corner, you write them down, I give it Chris, out of Boston, Rumsey, Cad Rumsey, American Tower, to put a hundred-foot cell tower up there in the corner, because I already got two over there on Interstate 84. American Tower, SBA, AT&T. I give these people, this is , oh, Osorio, and this is McKnight. That's a representative. I'm just here to do business. But, I mean, it seems like I have a lot of word stress. Could you advise me? I mean, I just want to do business at this time. If you don't like, I tell you what, this weekend, go look at the workmanship I did over there. I know, that's the curtain. Go look at the building. You know, the old brick building? It was empty for twenty years. Even the people said, stop. Man, you did a lot, nice job with that. Not that I'm that ego guy. I'm like Willie Nelson, real man. But could you help me out, please, sir?
Again, I'm familiar with the building. I'm not familiar with the application or the proposal. But I assume, by stopping in the planning office, building department.
Well, she said, gives me a tough time. I'm sorry, sir.
No, that's no problem.
Yeah.
Not knowing what her response was or what her analysis was, normally, that would be the starting point, see the building inspector. It sounds like a proper application of the sign ordinance and/or site plan based on the zoning in that area, which, again, I express my opinion, the owner of this, whether it's permissible or not. And then, depending upon that initial ruling, what our normal policy is, is that he wouldn't be sent to the planning board for a futile application, if you will. If, in fact, the analysis of the building inspector determined that it was not permissible or permitted under the ordinance, it would be referred to the zoning board of fields for purposes of a various application. That's why, again, knowing that he has an application for a subdivision is a little counterintuitive or inconsistent. I can't respond to that, but that would be normal.
So you've been to the, you've been to the ZBA?
No, sir.
Okay.
I tend to think he's at the first stop, and I may have something to do.
Well, she goes up there, not giving me a tough time. I know she's a nice lady. Oh, we don't put digital signs up there. Well, then I go like this. I'm not trying to be a level person. Then I gotta go like this. I go down, mobile bind, give her cash. His name is MX. I don't want, you know who he is, MX. Got Morgan Stanley, White Seltzer, lawsuit, whoa. I don't want to do that. I'm just here to...
I understand.
I mean, this is...
Well, see, our ordinance is, again, and this is common, this town and a lot of towns. Technology has far surpassed the text on a lot of these codes. And I know our sign ordinance, I consider to be somewhat archaic. But as such, it's been handled in the past, in fact, it's like it's handled in the village, as I did one last night, for Quick Check, which is coming into Goshen, digital signs. And they have...
What, they're running one?
I'm not saying you can't. I mean, I'm just saying that they have similar ordinance which will inhibit them and requires a variance, which, again, is a threat to the ZBA. I'm guessing that that's probably the issue upstairs, but I don't know. Proper procedure would be for Mr. Howard, our building inspector, to meet with Mr. Stack.
I had one. He wouldn't come out. She says, right in front of me, just last week. I'm not, we don't agree there, Bill.
Let's see if we can resolve this, then. I will talk to Mr. Howard.
I'm not trying to get, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
I'm very sorry, Inspector. I'm sorry.
I just can't. I try now to get, see if we can get it back on track. Then, it appears to me, I need to find out where it is in the process. And I know what the code says, and it precludes those kinds of signs in the town of Goshen. But the ZBA, our zoning board of appeals, they're the people who can, in fact, give a variance for that. So that's what we need to do. So I think what we need, or they consider it anyway. So what we need to do is get it back on track or find out where it's at.
Assuming that's the case, what, if it's cracked, there would be a turn down or rejection letter and a referral of the matter to the authoritative board who's going to work.
Right.
Can I get one of them tomorrow from Mr. Howard?
I will talk to him.
Can I pick it up tomorrow?
Yeah, I'll talk to him in the morning.
Can I come up tomorrow, two, three, four? If possible, please.
Sure.
Can I pick it up? Did I go to ZBA?
Yeah, well, certainly, you can follow that procedure. He just can't speak for the building inspector.
No, I don't want you. No, I don't want that. What do I do?
That is the process. He would come in.
I'm gonna have him call you.
Three eight six nine 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 nine.
Three eight...
I got a dementia. Eight four five three eight six nine 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 nine.
Okay.
I leave six o'clock in the morning, go to work. He can leave his name in there. I just pick up the, send a letter, sir, and I give it to ZBA, to Mr. Drop...
Correct. Mr. Dropkin.
Well, I think what will happen is, is that they will, they will put you on the agenda, and then you have to come in, explain to them what they, what...
I mean, I'm at the site. I have nothing to hide.
Okay.
Very familiar.
Sure.
Well, I was going to see somebody before Warren Buffett at Omaha.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much, sir.
I'm sorry about it.
No, no, no problem, Phil.
It requires an analysis and a turn down by the building department, which, again, would be the normal course. I don't know what has or has not been done with it.
Okay, very good.
Can I pick it up tomorrow, please, sir?
God willing, bring your line and do it back here.
Is Neil away on Fridays?
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, is Neil away on Fridays? We sent him to...
All we can send is that I'm here.
At those sessions.
Who's he in there?
But not at nine, we would be at this. We would not be at this.
Okay. I don't know. We'll find out. Will someone get with you? Either Kathleen, myself, or...
Can you hold it, Mr. Howard, please?
I will do my best.
You're all collecting. I'm not proud.
Okay. All right. So I hope we get up with you.
My girl.
And regarding, thank you very much.
This is South Tower, that digital. They want, they were there.
Okay.
They're very signed on with an other site up there on West Orange County.
Okay.
I'm sorry, one. Thanks.
No, no, no problem. Okay, any other items for the, uh, members of the floor? Jerry.
Doug, we have, we have a law with the karting industry here licensed. One of the permits that have been issued, one is the expiration. You have any idea?
They're issued once every year.
Right. The anniversary should be coming up, right?
Oh, you mean the karting and haulers?
Yeah.
They're from January 1st to December 31st.
Okay.
I issue them at the beginning of the year. I send out the forms at the close to the fall.
I do see another outfit running around called Accurate Karting. I've seen their trucks running around the village and out by Harton. I never heard of them. So whether that's a new player or some other outfit that's now running trash pickup here.
So the board's aware of it. Presently, I'm in the process of reviewing that ordinance, updated, corrected, provisioned, which we can spin to type those things that handle. So maybe in connection with that, I'll have somebody in the office check on accuracy, say?
Yeah, like accuracy.
And Jerry, brought in a couple of years ago, we did, we've quite a bit of money, I don't know the amount of money. So, but it is a significant amount of money as a result of your...
That was my other question. Has there any citations been issued for haulers that are not licensed going to the IWS transfer station?
Yes. I can't give you the names, but I'm actually prosecuting some of them. Actually, I am.
Great.
And I just can't recall the specifics of it.
See, that tax surcharge, surcharge area game can go two different ways. There's your tax surcharge area, then there's the other tax surcharge.
Though they're not related, but I would say.
Don't be unrelated.
Yes.
And what else you guys say, Jerry? Okay. Anybody else have anything they'd like to question? Joe?
It wouldn't be a meeting if I didn't.
I know, I know.
A close up of this, Kelly. So, so far, we've found out what's... Um, I don't want to get you in trouble. Just that, Jerry, so far, we've collected the excess of $28,000 for last year and this year so far.
You know, where I came from, I like to eat too. I get a little piece of this action hand.
Thank you.
Hand it up.
Jerry, no reason.
Wrong crew.
Okay, Joe.
It's a bigger thing.
Right.
Two things. One, I don't want to get you in trouble. I know there's... Don't say anything. A place you can't go. I'm, I'm just questioning the MTVE because there is radiation.
Right.
However, as you are probably aware, there has been another recent event at the garage.
Right.
I'm concerned with where that material may be migrating, living in the village. Our water, our water supply is soon going to be coming from water that is drained from that area. That drains down into the wetlands at six and a half station road. That eventually feeds out to the Walkhill, just above where the CRV wells are located on Sandy Brown Lagoon. It's bad enough that that's already downstream of the landfill that's sliding into the Walkhill. But if there's material that's migrating, MTVE that's migrating, that's obviously, it would be dilute to the point where you get the, a couple of cancers per thousand type thing coming up. That's not desired. So I understand, in terms of discussing vulnerability, you're limited, but I just want to kind of put in front of you that rather than just being concerned about it, since it is in the town, as the rest of the village, I would hope that the town would take some steps to... some steps to see that it's not migrating across town.
Let me share with you what, uh, we are done, because we were the lead agency, when they suspected that we were the problem, uh, we did all the work the DEC said to do. And, um, we are, then they asked, and they said at that time, uh, that there's no conclusive evidence that we were the problem, and highly suspect we weren't, but they didn't go beyond that. And the DEC then said they would become the lead agency, and they are. I mean, they've got all the experts, they're the ones who oversee all of this, and the future testing and all the engineering and whatnot, and they're the source of the information. I mean, they've got charge of this, they've got total charge of this. Um, them along with the health department.
So, you're saying that, that the town has no involvement if it, if there is migration for the town?
We, we, well, no. They are the state of New York who are responsible for all of this. They've got the expertise and the engineers, and they're saying that, that, uh, they're the ones, they're, they'll assume that responsibility and with their resource, and they're the ones who are, who are managing all of this and engineering all of this, so, yeah. We have no active program, um...
So, you're saying the town is hands off?
No, I'm saying that they're the lead agency, I'm assuming, and that, that they've got responsibility for it, uh, working with us and the county and everybody else. I mean, whatever they need of us, they will get, certainly.
But they don't seem to be involved in terms of, uh, any monitoring or testing of those wetlands or anything beyond the county site. There are a number of wetlands they have at site.
No, 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 I did, I did talk to Mr. Parizio, you know, probably two, two weeks ago.
That's solid, yes.
No, no, two weeks ago.
Great.
And he was going to be doing some testing down in the, the bird sanctuary.
For runoff from the, from the village waste lab?
Uh, yes, whatever, yes.
Because he is solid waste, he has nothing to do with wetlands.
Okay, well, you got him and you got David Traver.
Right.
Those two were covering the waterfront for the DEC.
So to speak.
Literally. So, anyway, to answer your question, yes, that, that we, uh, we don't have the resource, the expertise, we're not going to spend any money for it, and, uh, in this juncture, we have no need to do it, we're not asked to do it. It's not our, it, it may be happening in the county of Orange and in the Town of Goshen, but they're looking after, that's what they're paid for, that's their expertise.
If that were a private party, rather than a county, that was located there, and they had it spilt, and it was potentially migrating through the town... ...and an obligation to see to it that, uh, that that, that an end was put to that migration as soon as possible?
Yeah, hypothetically, but, but we're proactive, uh, Joel, in the sense that, one, there is litigation going on.
That's why I said that you were, yeah.
I'm not saying, no, no, you won't. It's public record that there is litigation going on, but there are families out there against the town, against the county, uh, and as Doug pointed out, we're proactive in the sense that we're defending that action, and we have done studies to an extent as far as the state's water access...
We spent about $35,000 doing all these studies and doing the soil borings and all the other things we were asked to do.
Uh, how long ago was that, Doug?
2006.
And then what, what happened was, as Doug indicated, DEC took over, uh, the status of that project in terms of testing, monitoring, defense, which would be the county's self-insurers, and, uh, to my knowledge, actively looking at what I call a plume in that area, including, uh, and my understanding is it was expanded to consider the Audubon Society property because of the location of the, uh, village facility, and so...
Well, it's downhill from, you know, and it's worse downhill, so...
Yeah, gravity, absolutely, yeah.
And that's exactly my point, is that anything on that slope is going to migrate down to the wetlands and feed to potentially our water source by way of the, the Rio and the Wall Hill and, you know, the, the, that's a guy who's...
Not being engineer, I honestly don't know. But I know what you're saying.
And, uh...
But the other thing they're doing, they're monitoring all of our water, all of our wells and things, that, every month?
On the town site?
On all of those homes, I mean, I, you have to talk to them, Joel.
Right.
They've got a water protocol, testing and whatnot, they're providing water to the families out there, et cetera, they put in carbon filters, I mean, they, they have a program that they're pursuing.
And then to clarify further, see, the town takes the position that we are not responsible for that problem, issue, contamination, whatever you want to call it. As such, uh, we're proactive in the sense that we're monitoring what's going on, we're in contact with the DEC and the county for that matter, it's also...
Well, that's, that's exactly where I was going with this, uh, not to, not to, uh, assess blame or liability, but simply that, that there's an obligation and public trust here, uh, relative to the consequences of, of this situation, which is within your, your boundaries.
Yeah, we get, we get copies of all the, uh, even monthly or quarterly, uh, water testings and things of that nature, and, uh...
And if it hasn't been addressed by the town since 2006, I would be concerned, because there's obviously no more reason...
But see, addressing is, is, to me, is proactive. It is being addressed, but not by the town per se, it's being addressed by the county and the state. Just so you understand, yeah.
Moving on.
Okay.
Just to be dogmatic and tautic, uh, a, a point that I've made in front of the village and, and less so here, but you brought up tonight, again, uphand comment about the supermarket. I feel very strongly that it is not the job of any municipal entity to provide a supermarket. It is, however, the job of municipal government to provide the environment in which an investor can reasonably expect to have a return on, a reasonable return on that, on an investment. You know, to provide the environment in which a supermarket might be successful. We all want a superm... Concerns me much more, uh, for what it says about our community than the fact that we don't have a supermarket. It, it essentially says, "Nobody wants to be here," and I find that much, much more troubling than the fact that we don't have a supermarket per se.
Well, this, this means, is economic development, job creation, and in the, in that realm will follow all the supermarkets and all the other businesses that we like to have.
I'm very thrilled to see Phil Drock moving on this and, and for it to extend to the village. As a community, we desperately need to do this for any number of reasons, uh, the, the most immediate that's at hand in this season is, uh, to create a ratable assessed base.
Yeah, sure. And, and the reason why we're bringing all the levels of government into this is because they all have a part in it, federal, state, county, and local, and, uh...
The best piece of news in, in a long time, that this is happening.
Okay, thank you for...
I don't think you're on the hook for it, and, and I, I hear all the time, "Why doesn't the village board do something about your supermarket? Why isn't the town board doing something about getting the supermarket? It's not your job."
Right. Good. Thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, Jerry? Yeah, Doug, uh, in line with what Joel was saying about the testing of the water and ways, and tonight, and it was in today's paper, there was a meeting over in the city of Middletown, being held by the county, I mean, it's Mr. Helbig.
Yeah.
And he was going to get the results of various testings, and one of the things that interested me, though, if, if I recall it correctly, they say there is now a situation which is, uh, elevated with the pollution and part of the Wall Hill. Whereabouts, they didn't say, and...
They say Montgomery.
Montgomery?
I read a report, it's online. They say Montgomery has a...
And they are, they're very active, 'cause they come on, you know, I live on the Otica Hill, and, and I think his name is Kelly, he's there all the time, testing and scooping stuff out.
Their report's downloadable from the county watersite.
Yeah. That's been communicated to us, and we've had people go, go train sessions today up at, at SUNY, Orange. So, yeah, it's, uh, they're doing a lot of work. We've been doing work of our own. Uh, this town board has authorized the, the, uh, water testing in the Black Meadow Creek and the other, the other, uh, to find out what factor of how it is, other things, so that we can go baseline. So, yeah, it's, it's a good thing.
I wish they'd test the Otica, I'd like to do a water, a water park there, that would be nice.
Okay. Can't top that one. Anyone else? Okay. Boy, Neil, you missed it, guy.
Oh, boy, oh, boy.
You may have been outside looking in.
The old stacker was looking for you.
But, but don't go, but don't go far.
Yeah.
Would someone like to make a motion that we adjourn, go an executive session with the intent not to return, to discuss and finalize a tentative agreement with the New York Farms, AKA Heritage States, for development of water sewer districts and update the status of the village town sewer dispute arbitrage.
And third, I would discuss the Turri and Batten tax surcharge, right?
Okay.
And the status of the Jersey trailer, uh, truck, trailer, his name, Tom, Project Watch escapes the two yards, there are no dedication...
The Cannon Hill Road and the, uh, sewer, or the, uh, drain of these.
Correct, we totally, yeah.
Okay.
Or the New York tra- truck and trailer repair.
Okay.
That's it? Okay.
Don't move.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second it. All faves say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Like, thank you, everybody, Kathleen? Thank you for having me.